Meeting to order. This meeting is a continuation of our budget discussions, but we have one additional item on the agenda as you see from your package here. So firstly, is there any disclosure of pecuniary interests under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act? Counselor Lloyd?
A reminder that I have a conflict with regards to community grant discussion.
Thank you. Okay, first thing on the agenda is a consideration of a report about Riverfest and Ice Jam Music Festival. I think our Director of Community Services is going to go through a report. Welcome, Brian.
Morning, Mr. Mayor. This morning, we have John Ralston with us, who is one of the organizers of Ice Jam. And this year, Ice Jam is looking to relocate from the Pearl Hospitality property to Bissell Park. And so in order to do that, they require permission from council also to designate it as a municipality significant event for the purposes of selling alcohol. So maybe I could turn it over to John and he could highlight to you what section of Bissell Park they wish to use, and some of the provisions they'll look after in that regard.
Thanks, Brian. Welcome, John.
Thank you. So I have a drawing here I can pass around. This is a Sean Waters' original. Circulate it that way. Basically, what it is, is we know that we could do it in the mill one more year. But moving forward, we're not going to be able to, so we knew we need to move it. The park has a connection already with Riverfest, so that worked really well. It's kind of our winter version of Riverfest. And what we'd be doing is putting a massive tent in the parking lot of Bissell Park, so on the east end, so as to not worry about grass being, if the tent warms up, the grass doesn't get ruined from it, it doesn't get muddy. It's all on that crushed stone gravel parking lot area. The licensed area would be specifically just in the tent with a little outlet of fencing for where the food vendors would be. But essentially, you've just got a huge tent right in the parking lot, and the whole event happens right in that tent. The tent's about 60 feet by 160 feet, I believe. 150? And the event would be self-supporting as far as we'd be bringing in everything that we need as far as power and water, gray water tank holding for food vendors, et cetera.
Is there anything else you wanted to add to that, Brian, or is it all in the report here?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. You can see through the recommendation, some of the things we would like covered off from a Senator Wellington perspective. And the only other thing that I would like to advise is that we came across this rather late in the process, so I know that John and his organizers are going to do their best to make sure that that doesn't happen in the future. But this did catch us off-guard. You can also see in the report the fees that are associated with this reservation. And any additional costs on our part will be at a cost-recovery basis to the organizing group.
Questions from council? Counselor Morris?
Yes, Brian, just a question for you on the parking. And I see in the drawing, it is the parking lot where you're going to pitch the tent. So the attendees will park presumably out on the streets. And is it necessary then to give the neighborhood a heads-up because it may impact them?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, in the report, I did indicate that the expectation is of the organizers to notify the neighborhood. In the past, with Riverfest, that's been through drop-off notices to adjacent landowners. So the expectation is that that's going to happen again, recognizing two things: the music that will be amplified and played, and the other thing is the parking activity and general activity around the park on that day. Maybe John could provide a little more as far as parking. In the past, when it's been Riverfest, they've arranged for off-site parking. I'm not familiar whether that's the case. John, could you comment on that?
Yeah, for Riverfest, because there's 5,000 or 6,000 people per day, we do do off-site parking and shuttle systems all throughout town. For Ice Jam, we're expecting between 750 and 1,000 people for it only, which would be pretty much the exact same number that we had last year at Ice Jam at the mill. There was no off-site parking provided at that one. We just notified the surrounding area of homes, and most people are coming locally, so a lot of people are walking. It's not the same kind of beast that we're dealing with with Riverfest, where we have to really focus on keeping the streets clear from traffic.
Any other questions from council? I have one quick one. As far as the costs, are we making sure that we're covering our costs on this one?
Mr. Mayor, that's the posted rate that we have used in the past for events such as this at Bissell Park. And again, if there's a requirement for any additional services from Senator Wellington's staff, it will be billed at cost-recovery.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay, I read the recommendation. The Council of Township of Senator Wellington authorizes the Ice Jam 2016 event to be held in Bissell Park on Saturday, March 5, 2016, with amplified music being performed live between 3:00 p.m. and 11:00 p.m., subject to the organizers, ensuring that their accounts payable to Senator Wellington are up-to-date, planning and implementing the requirements to ensure public safety as required by the Alcohol Gaming Commission of Ontario, Ontario Provincial Police, and Senator Wellington Municipal Alcohol Policy, and that council approves the requests received from Lot 18 productions to apply for a special occasion permit through the Alcohol Gaming Commission for Ice Jam 2016, to be recognized by council as a significant municipal event scheduled for March 5, 2016, in Bissell Park, in order to serve and sell alcohol during the event, and that the Council of Township of Senator Wellington grants an exemption from Township Noise Biola 5001-05 for the duration of the event. Can I have a mover for that? Counselor Fisher, second by Counselor Lloyd, all in favor? And that's carried. Thanks very much, John, for being here. And I hope the event goes great. Hope to see you down there. Okay, now moving on to the main event. We have, Mark has sent out new copies of some changes to the operating budget that he wants to speak to right now. So, Mark?
Okay, thank you. So I handed out this morning, the first page we'll go over is the list of reductions that staff is recommending. You recall at the last meeting, council requested staff go back and take a look at the budgets, see if we could reduce the tax rate further. So up on screen, as well as a list of reductions, but it doesn't show very well there, so I think you'll have to follow off the page you've got. So I'll go through these one by one. So bottom line, though, we've come up with reductions totaling 0.59%. That reduces the tax rate by $5.62. And we've reduced the tax rate to 1.89%, well, plus the capital, the 2% capital levy. So the way this is laid out, left-hand side, obviously tells you the department area. There's a bit of a comment about the nature of the reduction in the middle, and then you've got the total impact dollar-wise and percent-wise. So the first item, fund one-time increase in parks and rec, repairs and maintenance. So this is in the Aquatics Center area. You recall, there was note about an HVAC circuit board that needed to be repaired. We're suggesting or recommending we fund that from the General Capital Reserve. Reason for that is that this is essentially a one-time increase to repairs and maintenance. The expectation is that repairs and maintenance line item will go back down again in 2017. So that's $9,000. Second item, in the past couple of weeks, we've had inquiries apparently from Frisbee Group and another camping group for special events for 2016 that we didn't think these groups were coming back. So we've put in or increased revenue about $13,000 for special events. Third item, Fire Department, we've reduced the conferences and training budget. Now that a lot of the costs are into the, into our general ledger, we took a look at the conference as well as many other expenditures, but specifically Fire with their conferences budget, it's been under $15,000 for the past couple of years. So we're recommending reduction in that budget from $20,000 to $15,000. The next three are all sort of interrelated. We took another look at the fuel budget. I've sat in a few economic webinars, or economic forecast webinars, the past couple of weeks. And they both suggested that fuel rates are going to remain low for the next year, likely at the rates we saw last year. In doing that, what we typically done with the fuel budget specifically for Public Works is we used a five-year average. We don't have the staff or the sophisticated systems to take into account weather impacts and tracking fuel on every vehicle. So you recall that the biggest impact in the fuel budget in Public Works is the winter budget. Okay, if we have a bad winter, fuel goes up. They're pretty much, if you look at the history, they're basically in line. So we've used a five-year average in the winter control budget. So in the past, we've been average, or using a five-year average in the fuel budget as well. Fact that January's been pretty light winter-wise, and the fact that fuel prices are supposed to remain low, we're suggesting we take $20,000 out of that fuel budget. So we're taking from $290,000 back to $270,000. 2015's number came in at about $225,000, $230,000. Okay? Fire and Parks and Rec, we've just taken $1,000 out of those budgets. The fuel budgets for those two are much smaller. We're in the $15,000 to $20,000 range for those budgets. Contribution to capital. You recall that Building is looking to replace one of their vehicles in 2016. And if you take a look at the schedule, you see this $20,000 is the amount that's required from operations to fund that purchase. And then thereafter, it's $15,000. It'll be fully funded at $15,000. So what we're looking at is a one-time increase of $5,000. So we're suggesting we fund that $5,000 from another replacement reserve that has sufficient funding and does not forecast to have significant increases over the next four or five years. And that replacement reserve fund is the Public Works Equipment Replacement Reserve. So this essentially is just taking money from one replacement reserve and moving it to the other to get us over a one-time increase that would have an impact in the operating budget. Item eight, transportation. So this is, there's a propane heating light item in the West Garrafraxa budget line. We're suggesting we take $2,000 out of that, so that takes the budget from 10 back to 8. Propane prices are actually at historical lows right now, so. And that is the only that I can think of throughout the budget where we actually have propane heat. Mayor and council, you'll recall that for the 2016 budget, there was $1,800 put in for council communications with the constituents. We've, we're recommending or suggesting that we remove that $1,800 from the budget. Grants to community groups. You will recall that there's a provision for emergency relief funds. That's essentially the funds that have not been distributed to community groups. There have been requests in the past. They've been very minor. I think I can think of two occasions in the past 10 years where we've dipped into those emergency relief funds. We're suggesting if a request does come forward in 2016, that we fund that request if council accepts a request from the General Capital Reserve. So that'll remove $2,670 from the budget. And the final item is increasing the revenue estimate for Public Works. Public Works over the past couple of years have been more diligent in billing out services, or smaller services that they may provide to the public on their request. So we're seeing a trend now where revenues are increasing slightly, and we can do another $5,000 there. So if you total all of those up, it's, the net impact is $65,110. And that will reduce the tax rate to 1.89% plus the 2% levy. Okay, and then the next slide, actually, if we go on the next slide, we can come back to this. But if we go on the next slide, it shows the overall blended impact. At least I can call that one up. So this sort of ties it all together to get to a blended change. So the only light item that's changed here is the Senator Wellington portion. So again, that it's changed by, or been reduced by $5.62. So you can see the total township portion would be 3.89%, county portion 2.5%. It's just slightly less than $90 increase, and that's a blended change of 2.43%.
Thanks, Mark. Questions from council? Counselor Morris?
Mark, thank you for this report. My question is in respect to the item one on your reduction sheet there, of the $9,000 funding from the capital, or the General Capital Reserve, for the HVAC circuit board repair. Why only 9,000? Like, if you recall in our last meeting, I suggested, you know, a $75,000 reduction would bring us down to about a 1.8, and we're within $10,000 of that mark right now. So why only 9,000? On a capital reserve that has a balance of over $2 million, and an expected surplus from 2015 going into it, why couldn't we reach the full $19,000 expense funding from the capital reserve and bring it down to 1.8?
Good question. We could do that, but in doing so, you're essentially, you need to build in another $10,000 in the next year's budget. We'd be pulling out the base levy. The reason we're able to do this is because this is a one-time increase. All right? So we've increased, we've taken the repairs and maintenance from 10 grand to 19. We're saying, leave it at 19, bring in from the General Capital Reserve 9 grand, cover it off, and stops that one-time increase. Next year, this repair and maintenance budget goes back to 10. The General Capital Reserve money comes out. You haven't changed the base levy at all. Okay, it's all about the base levy. If we, if that remains at 19 grand and we pull out the General Capital Reserve, then you got to fund that 9 somehow. Where's it coming from?
Counselor Morris?
Just to follow up on that rationale, then, how do you explain if we were to fund a special request to council for a grant that would be funded from the General Capital Reserve? Like, would we have to increase taxes next year to cover that funding, to that grant? Like, I'm not following the logic here. And maybe I just need a little more clear education here on how you get to these conclusions. Because anytime you draw from the General Capital Reserve, you're drawing from money that's already in the fund. Is that correct?
In the fund?
There is a fund called General Capital Reserve.
Correct. Yes, you are drawing from that reserve fund.
You're drawing from that reserve fund. So are you not replenishing that fund with the surpluses every year?
If there's a surplus.
Well, if, yeah. We know there have been ever since 2008.
No, there was actually a deficit in 2008, I think, or 2009.
Yes, that's right. I know. That's what I meant. Ever since then, it's been a surplus. So we expect a surplus in 2015. So I just don't understand how the base rate gets impacted by drawing money out of a fund that holds a balance of in excess of $2 million.
You are correct that the $2,670 will be pulled out of the base levy, if that's what you're getting at.
What I'm trying to get at is how does the 2016 base rate get impacted by drawing money from a fund that already has cash sitting in it? Like, is it not an account with money sitting in it today?
Correct, but the General Capital Reserve is not funding the base levy. The base levy is...
I know that, but what I'm saying is you're taking $9,000 from that General Capital Reserve to fund the HVAC system.
Correct.
I'm suggesting we take $19,000 from it, and you're telling me that if we take more, we impact the 2016 tax...
17 budget.
Yeah, 17. Make the connection for me in a better way, because I'm not following that logic.
Sorry, if I can just say to Jack, isn't it because the $9,000 is a specific one-time project?
Correct. That's exactly what I said, yes.
So it won't be there next year?
Exactly. We've gone up to 19, it's going back to 10 next year. And remember, you got debits and credits. You got an amount coming in, General Capital Reserve. You got an amount going up one time only. They both come out next year. So the base levy remains the same. And, maybe this will take it further. What would happen then if you wanted to keep things as is? In 2017, the repairs and maintenance would go back down? Sorry. Trying to think how to explain this. If, if, if we don't pull out that General Capital Reserve money, you're going to have to do it every single year, from now until infinity. Does that, because it's not in the base levy?
Counselor Van Luyden?
Sorry, I think, Mark, sorry, I kind of understand where Fred's going. It's just, if he says take the extra 10, it's not, and I understand what you're saying, it goes in the base levy, but you need to take, if you're going to take an extra 10 on Fred's suggestion, it has to come from a one-time purchase in the 16 budget. So can you, is there, you've taken a 9 out of a one-time purchase. Is there a one-time 10,000 that you could also fund? It would have to be a one-time purchase in this year's budget that we'd use it for, not an operating...
Correct, and we've looked at that, and there's nothing. The two items that we found that we could do that on are listed here.
Okay, and I think that's the key where Fred's saying, well, if you have a one-time budget, is there another one-time budget purchase this year in the 16 that you can also take another 10?
There are no ramp-ups in expenditures that I can think of that are one-time only. Because keep in mind, most one-time things, the definition of a capital budget is one time and more than $5,000. Should this item have been on the capital budget? Probably, yes. It should have been. But it's not, because we were not aware of it until after the capital budget had been passed. So what are our options then? Put it on the capital budget, amend it, or treat it as we are, which is through the operating budget? Right? Because at the end of the day, when we do our year-end financial statements, it's come back to the operating budget anyways, or back to operations. Why? Because it's a repair.
Sayo?
The additional thing is we're looking at the capital reserve and recognizing there may or may not be a surplus this year. Through our capital 2% levy, we have ramped up the requirement of the funding that we need to debt-load two bridges in 2017. So we've increased it from the 1 to $1.4 million, which we're going to debt-load ourselves. We are not at that cap yet, and so we're counting on in the next couple of years to be able to build that up in order to support us debt-loading our own bridge infrastructure.
Other questions from council? Counselor Lloyd?
I would just like to make a comment. I was pleased to see that it didn't include only cuts, but included an increase in revenue streams to come to this, so which, to me, it gives a bit of a positive look at our moving forward and hoping that our municipality has got bigger and better things happening in it. One of the subjects that we talked a lot about, and it's not directly with this, is the funding in our planning and development through economic development. And there seemed to be a concern that there was no increase in funding in there, and yet we're expecting increased levels of delivery of service. So I, while I think this is great, we've gotten to this specific number, I have an overall concern that we've not really addressed what could be seen as a shortfall in that area.
Sayo?
So the direction we received from council on Thursday was to reduce the budget to under 2%. There was no direction from council, was a vote or direction from council to increase the budget. Yes, there were discussions with regards to looking at how we do address economic development in the next couple of years. And I think it was Counselor Fisher that mentioned, you know, that's something we need to work on this year and look at for 17 and 18. But clearly, direction from council's staff was to reduce the number to below 2%. Doing the cuts in additional revenues that we have here to 1.89 is a difficult situation on the budget. And we, given the 2017, 16 direction of council, we do not see how we can increase that.
Just wanted to add to that. It doesn't preclude that we're going to move forward with making sure that our economic development priorities are established. I think we do have them. We have to do a little bit of a better job communicating them to this group here, and to make sure that the activities that we are moving ahead do demonstrate how we're moving ahead on economic development as a strategic priority. And that is something that is an outcome of the discussions that we've had. We have to move forward on that. Because I don't think, just because there's not a dollar, there's not an increase in economic development, it doesn't mean things aren't happening. Some, a lot of those things are because we're moving ahead and behind the scenes to establish the foundations for doing some things differently in economic development. And as a result, maybe in next year's budget, you might see an increase, or you might see a decrease, depending on the direction that we take. But I think we do have to, and I think the point was well-taken, is that we have to establish what our activities are, economic development, in economic development, how they're different, and how they tie into the county, but aren't driven by what the county is doing. And I think that's a takeaway, and that's something that we have to work on really quickly and get it back to this table. And so that's the point I want to make. There's a couple of other areas that, we had some really good discussions at council. One was on when we go to seminars and conferences and making sure that we pull that back and demonstrate stewardship of the tax dollars when we do activities like that, and we have a report back. And so there's certain things in our practices and processes that I think we're going to move ahead on because of the discussions that we've had. How that interfaces with the number that you're seeing here, I don't think there's a connection there, but I think it's, it will be better government going forward. So I think that's good.
Counselor Van Luyden?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to say I am leery about reducing our budget too far in the sense that we run the risk of coming close to a shortfall, which will automatically reduce our capital projects. I fear that we would, as soon as we get into those issues, we do, throughout a year, use our General Capital Reserve to fund overspending in order for those projects, especially when they come up. We'll notice them year by year. We're going to fund out of capital reserve, we're going to fund out of capital reserve. That kind of stuff, I fear that we're suddenly going to start pulling back to reduce that. So I fear lowering our operating too far, that we have nothing left, and we start pulling capital, General Capital Reserve to fund operating budget. Excuse me. One question I do have for you, Mark, is in our General Capital Reserve, which we see, there's a large funded total there. What is, because with every reserve, there's credits and debits. What's the actual, shall I say, remaining or untouched, stable amount that sits in that account, not subject to credits and debits? So you're going to have money coming in, you're going to have money going out, but there's an amount that sits there that we would use for the funding of one-time purchases or emergency funding? If you can answer that.
That would be the cap that we're working towards, the 2.4 million. And as you can see, we're getting close to that, and if there is a surplus for 2015, we probably will get to that amount. Because based on page 151, the budget will be at about 2.37 million. And as I mentioned last week, what would happen is when we do, or if we exceed the 2.4 million, a report will come forward to council with some recommended options. But you are correct, that General Capital Reserve, as I mentioned last... But you are correct, that General Capital Reserve, as I mentioned last week, there are some risks on the exchange rate side, especially on vehicles. Or we could have some tenders that end up requiring some extra funding, and that funding would come from the General Capital Reserve.
Quick comment from the CAO first, and then Counselor Van Loon.
And just reminding councils, we had the discussion. So that 2.4 million includes previous council's direction to include $1 million. That was always to cover grants that we may be able to receive, and we're applying for the connecting link. And the second is increasing from $1 million to $1.4 million to debt-load from our own reserves, the bridge in 2017, the two, three bridges in 2017. So it wasn't $2 million. Council's direction was to increase that with our debt-load for the bridges and the, and doing internal debt. So now it is at the 2.4 million. We're not there yet, but our hope is that we might be there this year. So we are also looking at long-term, I mean, the next couple of years, what we may need to expand out of that from our reserve capacity.
Counselor Van Loon?
So my thought is, once we go through part of this year, and we start seeing some of our, our capital expenditures and our, our, our tenders coming back, would there be an option to look at that fund and, and just kind of have a layout of why we set it aside, similar to what Andy said, and see, and kind of relook at how many dollars we've set aside? Because it seems to be one of those questions. I don't think we want to attack it at budget time with no history and past of where we're going, but give council an opportunity to look at what's left after, at the end of this, near the end of the year, to say, okay, here's where our Capital Reserve was before we go into the 2017 budget. Do we want to change this Capital Reserve in any context before we go into the budget process? So that it's not a, a grab fund, but that we've re-agreed prior to the next funding, that we like where it is or we don't like where it is before we go into budget time? Is that something we can, we can kind of arrange? Thanks.
That was a yes? Okay, great. Counselor Loon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So can that be something that's put on our tracking sheet, so that it's one of those things where we, we don't lose sight of that particular item?
Yeah, that's a good idea. Let's add that to the tracking sheet. Counselor Morris?
I just want to say, I think we need to be careful as a council that we don't fall prey to a boogeyman scenario in our own minds. The facts are quite simple. They're on the sheet given to us on Thursday, is the township has operated at a surplus every year with the exception of 2008. And 2008 was not the result of bad budgeting in this chamber. It was the result of a global financial earthquake that shook, you know, the economies of the Western nations and slowed down their economic growth significantly. Had nothing to do with our budget decisions here. So let's get realistic and say, you know, this boogeyman idea of budgeting too thin because we may come up short, that's nonsense. We've never come up short, and we've budgeted a lot thinner than we are today. So let's, let's not play the game of shells. Let's be realistic with our taxpayers and just bring this thing down to where it needs to be. Thank you.
Before, before Counselor Kietz, I just want to make a comment on that. This represents the lowest tax rate increase in, on the operating side since amalgamation. So to say that we have ever been thinner than we are right now, from an operating standpoint, is not accurate. I can, I think you see from the work that staff has done, that they've sliced things off in a few areas that make sense, they didn't just play with numbers. And I think, we, Mark has made it pretty clear as to what we're going to anticipate when it comes to a surplus, and we're getting close, and we're doing a much better job predicting because we have the building fund now in a state where we can, it's a five-year average, and we're going to be a lot better on our, on a lot better on our predicting because there's not going to be that up and down. Just, just to suggest that we, we need to think about pushing operations to finance, operational surplus to finance the next year. I don't think that's a path we want to go down. And we're, if you're looking at $200,000 or less when it comes to surplus, that's, that's very light. And again, this operational tax rate increase is the lowest it's ever been.
CAO?
I'd also like to remind council that as much as staff are working here to reduce the budget, the operating as much as we possibly can, we are still short 3.05% of a tax increase every year to address all of our asset management. We've only addressed the bridges through our 2% capital levy. Staff could have come back to, with a presentation stating that what we need to be doing is actually increasing our operating contributions to our asset management and our lifecycle. We are short, significantly short. We've put a, a plan together to address our bridges, however, that does not meet all of our infrastructure requirements, and we're needing to address that over the longer term. By continuously reducing those contributions, we are going to be putting future councils and future operations into jeopardy by having major infrastructure requirements that we were not going to be able to afford. And so we're trying to plan wisely, and it's not a boogeyman. We do have an asset management plan that has gone through the process as required by the province. We work with that on an annual basis and report on that, and we're still shy significant contributions from our operating budget to that lifecycle. As Mark has reported, specifically in our Parks and Recreation area and a couple of our other areas, we are substantially short in the funding we need to do to replace our assets that we currently have in the long term.
Counselor Kietz?
I, I have to agree with Counselor Morris here about, about cutting further on the operating budget, because I do think that, from a fiscal and accounting point of view, you just look at the numbers, and the numbers have said that we have, in the last 10 years, had a surpluses of $3.7 million. And so yearly, that's almost $373,000. We're planning on having another surplus. Now, I realize that we have now, are budgeting in three years for the capital, and we are separating the capital from the operating. And so then this allows us to look at the operating with very focused energy. And so that capital budget, in the past, when them surpluses were there, we put it into the capital funds and it did go to capital budgets. But now we're looking at operations, and the numbers say that the surpluses, we need to deal with those surpluses, and we need to be fiscally responsible to the taxpayer with their tax dollars. And so, having said that, I would like to sort of look at these recommendations, and one of the ones there for transportation, to reduce the budget by 20,000, when you've said you, typically it comes in at 225 to 230, I don't know why you can't cut that a little bit more.
Mark?
Yeah, just to clarify, 225 to 230 is not a typical year. That was 2015. So keep in mind, we, we're doing a five-year average. The winter control budget came in at 75% of what it historically has, and if you do the math on that, fuel actually is at three-quarters of what the five-year average is of all. So there's a direct relation between the two. So we are actually taking a little bit of a risk here. The reason I'm recommending we only go 20 grand is because we know, from what the forecasters have said, fuel prices are going to remain low, and also we've got through January with, with only $100,000 basically on the snowplow budget right now. My, my fear is, is if we go deeper and, and take it back to 230, as, as you're suggesting, or if we go deeper, okay, if we even take another 10, what if fuel prices go through the roof next year? Then you're faced with a big potential spike in the tax rate. Am I, am I trying to smooth the tax rate? Yes, I am. I'm trying to avoid a potential huge increase next year. We, we've all seen what's happened with fuel prices, so I don't want to gamble on the price of fuel, I guess, as to what the price may be in 2017. I'm trying to look a year ahead as well.
Counselor Kietz?
Seeing as you, it's just a matter of what you're viewing as a projection, I think $10,000 more on that budget is, would be totally reasonable, because the, unless a war happens, and it's against Saudi Arabia and Iran, we are having surpluses of oil around the world for a long time, because we are technologically way more advanced, and that is the projection. You can go to oil industry, and that is what it's going to be like. And I think that we are, again, I think to reiterate what Counselor Morris says, we are inundated a lot of times with boogeymans and crises, and we should deal with crises when they actually happen, and then budget accordingly and work out that, instead of anticipating that something might happen when it's not. I'm not asking for us to go to 225 or 230. I'm asking us to go down to 260, and that will, again, and that's just one item, half other things that I'd like to talk about on this list, since I've only received it today.
I think just the point, I think anybody that does smart budgeting, I think you do anticipate challenges, you don't just react to what happens. And our staff has given us an indication that this is what they feel is doable, and there's a reason behind it. I think that's the key thing we have to keep in mind, is these reductions have a reason behind it. It's not just playing with numbers and thinking that, oh, we'll take another 10,000 here, another 20,000 here, because we know there's going to be a surplus. We don't know that. So there has to be rationale, and I appreciate that staff has given us the rationale, because there has to be rationale. It's not a, again, we've, we've talked about this already, it's not a macro thing. At the end of the day, you think, because we had a surplus last year, that we're going to have one this year, and you just eat into that surplus. There's a reason, there's a story behind the decisions that are being made, and we have to stick, and we have to appreciate the expertise of staff in some of these areas.
Counselor Van Loon?
Thank you. I, I think I see a theme here, and I guess I was wondering why, even for myself personally, why I wasn't feeling strongly to cutting this operating budget even more. $10,000 here, there. It is an amount of money, but over the whole budget, it's $10,000. I think my fear, at least looking at this budget, is I get the impression that there's counselors here that are very satisfied with where we're going with the capital budget, how much we're spending it exactly, and we feel comfortable. And for me, over the years, five years, we've been increasing capital and trying to increase capital, continuing, I'm not sure I'm happy with how much capital we're spending even now. So when I see a surplus, I like to see that surplus go towards capital. So when we, when we speak about cutting the operating, if there's $100,000 up or down in that operating, I'm really leaning to seeing that go to make sure capital continues, because I'm not happy with where capital is going, because I want to continue to be aggressive that way. That's maybe why I look at it and go, a, a small surplus out of that, of that budget, let's be aggressive on the capital side then with it. If, if we want to risk the operating side of bringing it down, because realistically, it's going to hit us again. We can reduce the operating, get nearer zero, but then next year, when we want to hit those capitals and we have an excess, maybe there's a $95,000 quote and we're 50,000 over, we have to achieve that through the tax rate again. That's my concern, and I would rather stay, to me, aggressive on the capital, see our surpluses go there and make sure that we're getting these things done, because that's where we're going to fall short. I just, I have that feeling, in your own home, you've budget for those kind of expenses long-term, so. That's why I'm, that's why I'm comfortable with the operating today, not because I like the surplus, but because I want it to make sure it goes into capital.
Counselor Loon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to speak in support of what Counselor Van Loon was just saying. My, one of my first opportunities to work with the budget, we were at that time contributing from our operating budgets to capital less than $300,000. And we have struggled to get it up to the $700,000. And, and that to me is a sorry statement, that we're not able to give considerable dollars over to our capital fund from operating, and that we are so very reliant on the funding that comes from OLG. To me, that's, we are so vulnerable in any capital projects in this community, because we are so much focused on the money coming from our slots and, and raceway. If we should see a change in that, and I understand we would have a one-year opportunity in which to adjust, we will see over $2 million lost out of our capital. If we don't continue to put our, our small operating surpluses into capital, then we're going, we are really vulnerable. When we sit through reports from asset management, from reports from, from Watson Associates that tell us that we're underfunding and we're falling behind in what we need to do, attacking this budget, and I'm really pleased that we didn't see, you know, transfers from reserves, they're the only things that were reduced, our staff went and found it within the actual operating. They did not want to put risk of transfer to reserves in that picture, because responsibly, we're trying to build those dollars to a point where we can replace the things that we need to replace. So I'm, I, personally, I think we've asked our staff to go away and find reductions, and they've done that. And for us as a council to kind of change the parameters now on what, what it was that we asked them to do, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with that.
Counselor Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been listening, because frankly, I've been trying to, to learn as I listen, and I do. And I really appreciate what's been done here. I think staff did follow the direction that they were given at the last meeting. I still, with Counselor Morris, don't fully understand the discussion about the reserves and how they work, and if you take it out this year, you have to. And, and I think all of that discussion maybe simply comes down to sort of the level of risk tolerance that, that this council has, especially when you talk about things like future, trying to predict future fuel prices, or where the currency is going to go and things like that. Obviously, it's prudent to build some of that into a budget, and as, as I understand it, that's the function of, of reserve funds in those areas. But maybe, maybe there's a, a higher level of risk tolerance around here than, than, than maybe you think. So I just think, maybe that's a discussion, the whole reserve fund issue, the whole contribution issue, maybe is a discussion for the coming year, much like Counselor Van Loon said, just the whole concept of what we're doing, why we're doing it, what are the risks, what are the benefits, that kind of thing. Because that would be very helpful for me, certainly, maybe, maybe the rest of everybody gets it, I, I don't. Certainly, it's prudent to put money in reserve accounts, there's no question about it. Part of my confusion, and I think maybe it's simple as terminology, I see something called the General Capital Reserve. When I first looked at that, I think that's for capital, but as I sit around and listen to things, it seems to be for everything, or much of everything. There's an emergency, there's something that comes up, there's the go-to place. So maybe it's a question of terminology, maybe we need a capital reserve, but maybe we need a general reserve, you know, for emergencies, and then you get into the whole risk thing. So I just, I'm thinking, I'm okay with what's been done here today, I'm, I'm maybe a little concerned about the whole council communication thing in light of the optics of that, given what we've said about communication, but I can accept that. I do think what's been raised here is, is a legitimate strategic issue for us to discuss in general terms, what we do with reserves, how we do it. And I think the other philosophical question, and these are philosophical questions that came up, was what do we do with surpluses, the whole concept of surpluses? To me, in a perfect world, and we're never going to get a perfect world, but in a perfect world, if you generate an operating surplus, it means you've essentially budgeted too much and collected too much. In a perfect world, you come out at zero, it seems to me, because we're taking money out of people's pockets. So we should just take what we need. What's the old advertising slogan, everything you need, nothing you don't? And that's a perfect world, but we're never going to hit that, and I, I take the point, and I think it's a good point, that we have, given the size of our budget, the surpluses we generate on the operating side are pretty small percentage terms. So we are doing it well, but, you know, we should always try and, I think, not rely on surpluses to fund known expenses in the future. If we want to budget more for capital, budget more for capital specifically. And if that involves raising more money some way, do it, if that's the goal. It seems to me, and then you get into the other issue- It seems to me, and then you get into the other issue of, well, okay, what do we do with a surplus we generate? Well, it can be operating. Maybe you can, in a given year, fund $10,000 or whatever it is to get you to a certain point without having that base impact in future years. So, that's just a question of how we do it. So, I don't know, where am I going with all this? I can live with this, what's been presented. I think there is a discussion to be had at a higher level about reserves, transfers to reserves, risk tolerance, what we do, why we do it. If nothing else, to educate me, maybe the public, um, and see where that takes us next year. We're not going to solve it today. We're not going to solve it in time for the 16th and we don't want to delay or confuse the process even more to try and do that. But, uh, there's a discussion there to be had, I think, given the questions that have been raised and hopefully, we can get around to it.
So, I add that, I think that's a very good suggestion. We'll add that to our listed to-dos that has come out of here to have a discussion, a session on reserves, risk balance, surplus, um, because I, I think it's, that's critical for all of us to have a really good handle on it and outside of the budget time where we can really have a, a real decent discussion about, about, uh, the concepts and then getting into our own scenario here at Center Wellington without having to pass a budget in the process. So, let's, let's do that this year.
Counsel Morris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would suggest if we're having such a discussion in the future, that we also include in our discussions, a complete review of our investment policy, uh, because I find that we're in a very low interest rate environment and relying strictly on GICs from the bank, uh, I don't think that's totally wise in, in this case. And so, I would hope that if we are having a discussion on our, uh, financial procedures, that we would include that, uh, policy as well.
We'll, we'll add that in for sure because that's all part of managing taxpayers' money. Any other questions? Any other thoughts, uh, on this budget before I move to the recommendation?
Counsel Kietz.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to thank the staff for, for looking for these recommendations and, uh, trying to follow our directions. I do feel that, um, as I would like to reiterate that, and what Counselor Fisher had said, that yes, operating budgets, when you have them, you're supposed to be going to try to be as balanced as possible because this is taxpayers' money. So, to sort of say that you need capital funds, it's disingenuous to say it should come out of operations. You should just fund for the capital, what you need and that's how. And so, if we underfunded that, we need to go back and look at that. And I think that having surpluses, we were already allocating $700,000 for that in this budget for the capital. And we have the 2% levy, which is building continuously. And we have the slots money and that has been a 10-year thing where we've had $22 million come out of the slots for capital projects. Is that threatened in the future? So, like, then you have to allocate and work, work on your capital budget, but not on your operations. Your operations is different and then you need to look at the operations and budget accordingly. And that's what I think. So, if you need to refund and relook at your capital budget, then that's what you should do. If you lose the slots, well, then, yeah, you know, it hits the fan and you got to look at that. And so, that's what proper fa, funding or proper planning would be. But to sort of say that you can't cut anymore because you want to have more capital, that's deceptive for people when they're looking at the operations budgets. That's just how I see it. That's how I run my own, if I need to fund capital and I have to borrow money, I'm just doing that for the capital. And I think that to sort of say, well, we have to budget more because we have to have more capital, sorry, that's, that's not what we're, we're looking at. You have to fund the capital and make the plans and make a capital budget plan for that. That's what I think. And so, uh, I can live with this this year, but, um, I, I, I think there's a lot of things that you still can look at in operations. I really still believe that we need an operations committee and that needs to be done so that, and that's what we've had in previous, in the past. I think there should be a budget committee and I think there should be a planning committee because we seem to come up with these problems with the public and those are things that can be helpful to us with an alternative viewpoint and perspective. So, having said that, I think that when we, when I said last time, um, you know, we, we cut the budget, uh, I divided the, the wages part out of the budget, um, I'm just going to say that's a, that's a real perspective that we need to look at. Research says that government employees are paid more than private sector employees. That's recent research. That's, uh, June of 2015. And it's not going to happen now. Of course, it's not, it's two years away, but it's something that we should actually look at and especially at the county, um, because they have a hu, much bigger budget than us. And I think that those are real savings that can be made in, in operations. I, I see that, I've, we got the wage salary, um, and I think that some of the things, I think, uh, some of the public would be surprised at the starting wages of some things. I think that we also need to, uh, keep in mind that there's not two types of people. There are not, uh, people that work for the government and then there are people that don't work for the government. There's, we're all in this together and we're all working together to do this job that we've been elected to do. So, I'm speaking to fellow counselors and to the mayor to, uh, that the taxpayers are looking for that. And I think that I can go with this right now, uh, this operating, but I think in the future, we need to be really much more specific about what is operations and what's capital and budget accordingly.
Just wanted to make a quick point before I, um, turn it over to Counsel Van Loon. I think, um, you know, there's a truth to that. We don't, if there was a, uh, significant, uh, surplus in operating and then we're pushing that to capital every year, I think that's an issue because we don't want to be, be funding, be funding as a general rule, a huge percentage of our operating on capital. We're talking about the leftover. I mean, I think we're doing a good job pushing capital funding over and we want to be as, as accurate as possible when we're trying to address our, our infrastructure deficit that we have. But, uh, I don't, and I think, I think that's an important thing, but we're talking about, you know, after, after staff, this is a budget, so they're putting their best guess on. They're putting their best guess at this and their best estimates at the operating and they're not going to, none of us have a crystal ball, even though if we look at the last few years, we think we do. We, we don't, we don't have a crystal ball and they put their best estimate forward on our operating. And the, I think around here, what I'm hearing is that if that goes, if there is a surplus, after you put your best estimate together, um, you're not trying to fund capital to operating, but if there's a surplus, it's better to have that go to capital than going to operating as a rule. And I think, I think there's, there's some common ground there around this horseshoe about it, but we are getting hung up a little bit on the terminology and I think doing that, that, that session this year is going to be important because we're going to be able to find a little bit more common ground when it comes to, uh, some of the principles behind, behind investing and budgeting and all that kind of stuff. So, I'm looking forward to that.
Counsel Van Loon.
Thank you. Yeah, I was, um, just listening to your comments, uh, Counsel Kietz as well and, and the ones prior. I very much agree that, I think that there's things that we need to do ahead of time to get that budget, the discussions happening. And I, I look forward to that being a committee of the whole finance committee, that we're all there because I don't think anyone wants to be out of that subject and that conversation. Um, and I, and I agree Counsel Kietz very much that we should shoot as close as possible to our budget. We know that that's our goal, but I do think that if you, uh, if you look at, uh, financing, whether you even go to your accountant, your account, you will, you will not ever have someone tell you to use, to shoot for a surplus and use it to fund the next year of that operating because you're going to affect the, the following years of increases. I'm not thinking that I want to have a surplus in, and I want to be clear with that, as you say, deceptive. I don't want to have a surplus in this year, but if we have a surplus, I will stand 100% behind the thought that it must go to capital because if we use it to fund operating, it will affect the subject year after because you've reduced your, your percent and it automatically means an increase the year after. So, I suggest that that kind of thinking, maybe speak to some accountants, maybe try to figure out some of this because that is where it's very important that the budgeting side, you don't budget for a surplus, but if you have a surplus, that we start thinking of those one-time purchases, not year-over-year expenses because we run yourself stock or you're trying to fund next to next. So, I'm very cautious. I, I totally agree with you. All of these, in the fact, we need to shoot as close as possible. And I think when you look at the size of our budget and we look at our surplus, I wish that, that our, my guesses in real life were that close. So, I think that we're, this is an amazing budget considering how many accounts there are. So, I'm supportive of this budget and I look forward to our discussions this coming year as well.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and read the recommendation, um, that, and that the town, that the Council of the Towne and the Center of Wellington adopt 2016 budget as amended. Have a mover for that recommendation? Counsel Van Loon, seconded by Counsel Lloyd. Any final comments? All in favor? No, it is carried. So, next item on the agenda, any questions for the media? Can I have a motion to adjourn? Counsel Kietz, seconded by Counsel Van Loon. All in favor? Just wanted to make a comment, I should have done this before we adjourned, but I made a comment thanking staff for all the work on this budget. Um, I know it's not easy to put, uh, these budgets together and you guys do a really, really good job. Thanks for being responsive and reactive to, uh, what, what comes out of this, what comes out of these meetings here and being able to adapt the numbers and, and to move in a different direction. We have a really good finance staff and a really good senior team, um, and I appreciate all the work you've done. Thanks to council for the level of discussion that we've had. Um, and, uh, you know, we'll move forward with those action items that we identified. There's about six, six action items that I have and we'll make sure that we move ahead on each one of those in the coming year. So, thanks very much. Have a good rest of the day.